Okay, we are ready for the planning board meeting of, what day is it? June 23, 2022. Can we get a motion on the resolutions?
So move approval of Park Potomac Sketch Plan Amendment and Montgomery Auto Sales Park Site Plan.
And I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that's approved. How about the minutes from June 9?
Move approval?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that's approved. Can I get a motion to approve the record Platts?
Move approval for subdivision Platt, Lone Oak and subdivision Platt on Harry M. Martin tract.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that's approved. Could I get a motion to approve the regulatory extension request?
Move approval for extension request on Kingsview Station preliminary plan in addition to Ray's Adventure preliminary plan.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that's approved. I think we have a separate teams call for item eight, so we'll take just a second to switch over. Okay, I think we are back for item eight, which is Montgomery Industrial Park-
Mr. Chair.
-site plan amendment.
If we could, before we go forward with that, I just want to make a correctional motion for regulatory extension request on Kingsview Station would be both the preliminary plan and site plan. So do we have a-
Okay, with, yeah, I think without objection, well, I will treat that motion as including both.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for that correction. Mr. Folden.
Good morning. For the record, Matthew Folden, Regulatory Supervisor for Mid County Division. I'm here today with Montgomery Industrial Park, lots 32 and 33, Site Plan Amendments, eight, 1990, 69C, and eight, 1994, 26C. I have a brief presentation, but we've received no public opposition to this, and the proposal's relatively straightforward, so I'll ask the board if you'd like the presentation. Otherwise, I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
I think that unless we have comments or questions, we could just look for a motion, unless somebody on the board wants to discuss this in detail.
I found the staff report to be complete and comprehensive on this, so I don't really need to see anything, so I'll make a motion. I don't need to discuss further because the staff report is, in fact, makes the record. So I would move to approve the staff's recommendation on the Montgomery Industrial Park Site Plan Amendment.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that is approved. And now we can move to item 10, which is Planning Department's Non-Departmental Budget Okay, then. Item 10 is Montgomery Planning Department's Non-Departmental Budget Transfer Request. And to explain this, we have the Planning Director, Gwen Wright.
Thank you. For the record, Gwen Wright, this is a very simple budget transfer request. When we had done the fiscal year '22 budget, and when it was adopted, we had not yet completed the planner series for the comp and class study. So we knew that that would have an impact on our planner salaries, so a marker was reserved in the Administration Fund's non-departmental section of the budget to address the budgetary impact of the study's results. So that study has been completed, the reclassifications have been processed, and the fiscal year is nearing an end. So we have determined that we do need to access these funds to cover the increased salary expenditures for the planner positions due to the comp and class study, and that set aside had been $256,000. And we are requesting approval to transfer that from the non-departmental section of the Montgomery Administration Fund budget to the operating budget for the Montgomery County Planning Department.
Okay. If there are no questions or comments on board, we could get a motion.
I'll move for approval to approve the budget transfer request as requested.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that is approved. And that's going to bring us to item six, which is a budget transfer request for the Parks Department. And that's going to bring us to item six, which is a budget transfer request for the Parks Department. Okay, and now we're going to talk about a budget transfer request by the Parks Department. And for that, we have Mike Riley and Nancy Steen and Mity Figueroa, and maybe some other people I haven't mentioned.
All right. Good morning. For the record, Nancy Steen, Budget Manager for Montgomery Parks. And I'm here today requesting your approval for a budget adjustment for the park fund. As you know, we've had quite a bit of staff attrition this year as we've eased out of the pandemic. We've also got a very competitive job market, and that has contributed to a record number of vacancies in our department. Therefore, we're coming to the planning board now to request to reallocate budgeted savings and personnel to non-personnel to take advantage of this available funding to meet departmental needs. I'll just give a quick summary. There is more detail in the planning board memo. Currently, we're requesting approval to transfer $770,921 of available personnel savings in the park fund to be used for non-personnel needs. In addition, in this transfer, we're also reallocating funding for Personnel Services among divisions and also moving funding from non-departmental to various divisions. So the first request we have is to allocate $133,795 to purchase a mobile stage to be used for departmental events and programs. This will be used predominantly by our Activating Parks program. The next item in our request is to reallocate $129,253 to purchase a dump truck that will be used daily for multiple tasks by our athletic field team. Next, we're requesting $40,000 to cover unbudgeted costs for contracted legal services. We are also requesting $467,873 to prepay debt service costs associated with the Capital Equipment Internal Service Fund. As you recall, prepayment of this debt service is one of the FY '23 budget reductions that we used to meet the county's executives' recommended budget for FY '23. Finally, similar to the one that you just heard from Planning Board, we have funded a non-departmental that was a marker for changes from our classification and compensation study. We are requesting to move approximately $151,000 of funding to cover costs associated with those changes and classifications for various staff. And then we are also including some other minor changes of personnel costs, just reallocating funding within divisions based on the actual cost for the division. So at this time, we're asking for the planning board to approve this transfer unless you have any questions.
If there are no comments or questions, could we add a motion?
I'll move for approval to approve the budget transfer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that is approved. Thank you very much. And we'll be back in a second to talk about the Soccerplex. Okay, we're ready to talk about Soccerplex and to introduce this item, I think we have David Tobin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is David Tobin. I'm Manager of Public Private Partnerships for Montgomery Parks. And I'm very pleased today to bring you Matt Liver, Executive Director of the Maryland Soccer Foundation, who's going to speak and provide you with the annual report of what's known as the Soccerplex. Soccerplex operates under a 40-year lease. We're in year '22 of that lease and is probably our largest public-private partnership. Serves almost a million people annually and has invested since 2000 over $7 million in general improvements to the facility. The Parks Department capital budget and operating funds that maintain and operate South Germantown Regional Park also serve to facilitate the successful operation of the Soccerplex by maintaining infrastructure, sharing the use of park facilities and equipment and other critical services. In addition, park staff provides special event support, maintain trails and roadways, and support multiple other partnerships and enterprise facilities located at South Germantown Recreational Park. As part of Maryland Soccer Foundation's lease agreement, they provide you with this report annually, which includes financial information. Despite the many challenges presented by COVID-19, which included the loss of a spring and summer season and a modified fall season, and the revenues normally associated with that, Soccerplex continues to be a successful example of the benefits public-private partnerships can provide to the community. Attached is the Maryland Soccer Foundation submitted 2021 annual report. And having taken up a little bit more time than I planned, I'll turn you over to Executive Director Matt Liver.
Chairman Anderson, Commissioners, thank you for having me today. I'll be pretty quick for you. Last year was pretty slow, at least for the first half, but we got back to it. Just kind of give you a perspective, and these are compared to 2019 numbers for our recreational league. In the spring of last year, we were at 55% of capacity. In the fall, we were up to 68%. On the good side, this spring, we're up to 108%, so we exceeded our 2019 numbers. So we're moving back to what we would call normal. We resigned all of our major events for soccer, lacrosse, volleyball, and basketball for three-year deals, so they're through 2025. Last year, we hosted a six-week-long professional women's lacrosse league, which was a first for us. As you know, last year, the Washington Spirit moved out of the Soccerplex in an arrangement with DC United. We did backfill them with a men's professional team, the Maryland Bobcats. For community stuff, we still held two blood drives with the Red Cross. We have a COVID testing site still set up in our parking lot to provide access to the community. Sustainability efforts, we're experimenting with new native plants, flowers, and grasses to reduce mowing, to cut down on gas emissions, also save us some money. Staffing changes, last year Mitch Litz was our Director of Grounds. He has left. He is now the Director of Grounds for FC Cincinnati in MLS. Those of you who have been around for a while, remember Jared Minnick. He was our former Head of Grounds. He has returned as our Head of Grounds again. Some stressing things for us, we're in the largest shortage of referees we've ever seen in sports, not just soccer, but across the board in every sport. So that's going to be a long-term impact that we have to solve. Renovation delays that we did last year because of the pandemic have restarted. So we'll be renovating at least three fields in the summer once our lacrosse season ends. Highlight so far for this year, we hosted an MLS Next event. So this is the future professionals that will be playing in MLS. We had 256 teams from around the country. Only 14 of them were from the DMV area, so we brought a lot of people from around the country in for that one. We're currently in talks with the Big East about hosting their championships for men's and women's soccer. We're currently undergoing renovations to our stadium. We are changing out the playing field itself, and we just installed a brand-new video and scoreboard. The solar project that was approved last year is currently delayed due to PepCo issues. Apparently, we are in a very heavy solar issue area, so they're trying to figure out how to do the telemetry to make that work. Some items that want to put on your radar that will be coming up. We are currently talking with AT&amp;T about putting a mini cell tower somewhere on the property. Anyone that's been in the park during an event weekend, there is zero cell service. I know that also causes problems to your staff in the maintenance facility because they have some alarm systems that run on cellular. So if that system's not available, it causes them some issues. As David said, that we are coming up in 2025 on our lease renewal period. We'd like to start those negotiations sooner rather than later and try and make sure that it's a smooth transition. This conversation started before the pandemic, but I think we need to revisit it. A long-term solution to the maintenance yard, it is very crowded down there. We need to figure out a solution to have more space for both your staff and our staff. Another one that was a conversation that started pre-pandemic, a need for a second entrance and exit. Again, if you've been to the Soccerplex on a weekend where there's an event, it's a traffic nightmare. And from my side, it's also a safety issue. If there's any incident that happens in that park, we're going to have a real struggle getting first responders in and people out. So I think we need to address that as well. And a more recent issue has risen, and we want to renew our request that Field 23 and 24 be converted from community park fields over to the Soccerplex. So there's a continuity of fields at the space and allow our staff to maintain the fields to the level that they need to be maintained. We're currently working with park staff on some of those issues now, but just wanted to put it on the radar.
Are you, you're not suggesting that on that conversion of those community field requests, that it would no longer be permitted by the Parks Department? Are you saying that you want to turn them into additional fields as part of the partnership for the Soccerplex to operate or simply maintenance?
We would like control and maintenance of those fields.
Okay, do we, are we, Mr. Tobin, are we aware of how much those fields are used by community and what the differences are? I mean, I'm a little bit hesitant to take community use fields away and provide it to a part, to the Soccerplex for that, if it's getting good use.
It is. Somewhere around 40 to 50% is community use, which doesn't negate the challenges that we have maintaining that field. When those fields were originally set aside for community use, the intent was, well, the requirement in the lease was that we maintain those fields to a tournament standard to accommodate the needs of the Soccerplex. They use it heavily. There have been recent discussions about maintenance of those fields, and we're working on it. I think the general position is that those fields are used sufficiently by the community, that we work with Soccerplex on maintaining the tournament-level standards, but not relinquish the permitting of those fields to the public.
Yeah, possibility that potentially there could be some hybrid where the Soccerplex could permit its use during, for itself, just like any other community member, instead of just turning it over that way so that we know that the community gets an opportunity, maybe based on the percentages of use type of thing. But I agree, I'm a little bit hesitant to turn over community use fields when there are so many already available to the Soccerplex. I also have another question. Have you all at the Soccerplex, have you ever done an environmental development impact for? I mean, I note that a lot of the report is about people coming from out of the DMV area to use those for tournaments and other uses. So have you ever, have you been working with the county economic development on what the environmental, what the economic development impact to the rest of the county is? For, for example, you know, hotels and restaurants and things like that so that it elevates that value of the partnership to the county as a whole?
Yeah, we haven't done it directly through MDEEC. However, there are organizations that we belong to that have calculators that do that. The last time we did it in 2019, the full calendar year, doing it 2020 and 2021 aren't really meaningful. It was about $37 million to the county. It'll definitely go up this year. The MLS event alone was about $4.3 million alone.
Okay, I'd be interested in having you add that to your annual report so that it's clear to us that, you know, and to the rest of the people listening and the county, about the value of this kind of a public-private partnership.
No problem.
Yeah, on this community use thing, if you have kids who play soccer, as I did, I still have kids, I just don't play soccer anymore. You find yourself driving to Germantown like three or four times in the space of a weekend, but it's not just because of Soccerplex. A lot of the permitted fields that wind up being used by some of the leagues like MSI are in the Germantown area, like Waters Landing, for example. There's probably four or five parks within, you know, three or four miles of the Soccerplex that wind up being heavily permitted just because that's where there's space. So even if your, even if your kids are in Silver Spring, they still wind up in Germantown because that's where the field capacity is. So, yeah, on the one hand, I think Carol's making a good point that we want to make sure that community use is still available. On the other hand, I think part of this is not so much about the need for community use in Germantown as it is community use in other, in permitted fields of a reasonable equality, particularly in Down County, both east and west sides of the Down County. And I wish I could say I thought we had a really good handle on field capacity needs. After all this time, I'm not sure that we really do. We did a study of ball field capacity needs about five or six years ago, and I think the upshot of that was that before we start, you know, adding fields, we need to try to get more usage out of the existing fields. And we've come a long way on that score with investing in better turf management, for example, and upgrading fields. But I think it's probably time to do another ball field study to assess quality of the turf and how that's holding up to the, and assessing the amount of usage that's going on so we can get a better, just more accurate and refined understanding of where there is need for more capacity. I think it's, as I say, I think it's to push some of the capacity in places other than the upper northwest part of the county because right now you're asking people to basically drive, you know, in some cases, hundreds of miles over the course of a weekend. If you have a couple of kids who are involved in team sports and you're only available permitted fields that are, you know, league quality, turf are way up in the Up County. So I guess that's all by way of saying I think this is kind of complicated, and I think you're raising a good point. I'm not, I think we could probably give up the field for community use if we. I'm not, I think we could probably give up the field for community use if we, you know, provided the capacity in other places, because it's not like, the problem is not that every kid in Germantown wants to play soccer on Saturday, it's that kids all across the county are needing to find a place to play that has the, you know, game-quality fields available. Any other comments or questions?
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Liver. I did have two questions about your presentation. The first was regarding the proposed location of the mini-cell tower. What were you thinking, or what has AT&amp;T indicated?
So they are proposing to attach it to a light pole in the parking lot of our east stadium lot, so adjacent to the stadium. So it won't go any higher than a light pole, and it's a small unit, you may have seen it, it looks like a, they said a cylinder that goes on top of it. So it's not a full tower, it's just a mini-tower, but it will increase the capacity of the park somewhere around 40% to 50%, which is in desperate need. We can't, we can't call the maintenance yard from our office, we have to drive down there to talk to them sometimes. So it's, it's a growing problem, we're not really sure, it's, in the past three years, the service has really dropped off, and no one can give us a real answer for that.
I know sometimes when I'm in the park, my cell coverage drops in that area when I'm riding around. Second question has to do with the second entrance that you mentioned. What were you, right now, I've experienced after, pre-game and post-game, the traffic, but what were you envisioning? Because it's literally a circle to enter into that space and a circle to go back out, and it's the same circle.
Exactly. Ideally, the pipe dream would be to get Pepco onboard and allow a road to go through the easement. So that will put you further down Schaefer Road and break the congestion, and a lot of it comes down to that T-intersection right at the Swim Center. And there's, we've also talked with Department of Transportation about, excuse me, reconfiguring that, so it's a right turn only with bollards to force traffic in, because that road technically is two lanes, but not marked accordingly, so is the traffic circle, but also not marked accordingly on the ground. If you drive from Schaefer Road from the, I guess, the east, you'll see the sign that marks those two lanes, but that's the only sign that says so. So there are some options just to alleviate some of the traffic. The second entrance is more from a safety standpoint, even if it's not fully operational Monday through Friday, but it's only used on event weekends or something along those lines to get people out, that would greatly increase the security issues that we're facing, especially the way the world's going right now, that, you know, there are concerns that if we do have an incident, we are going to be in a real bad spot.
Thank you, Mr. Liver.
Okay, if there are other questions or comments, we don't need to vote on this or anything, do we? We just need to receive your report. Glad to hear that things are looking up after the last couple tough years.
Very tough years.
Yeah, nice to see you.
Good seeing you again.
In the Down County, right? See you in Germantown soon.
Sure.
Okay, turning now to what I hope is the final work session for the Wheaton Regional Park Plan, with Chuck Kynes and Ho-Jean Garland and Darren Fliché.
Thank you. Good morning, Board members. For the record, I am Ho-Jean Garland, Supervisor, Park Planning, Montgomery Parks. Thank you so much for the opportunity for us to come back to present about the Wheaton Regional Park Master Plan today. Over the last several weeks, we had a draft plan briefing with the Board and a public testimony discussion, and received the Board's support for the majority of items. Today, we're coming back with just the three items, and without the further ado, Chuck, Project Manager, will walk you through today's presentation. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Jean, Chuck Kynes, for the record. Our agenda today is to review and discuss the staff responses to the Board, comments and direction from the June 9th work session. The three topics that we're bringing back to you today are the Equestrian Center slash Wheaton Park Stables, the Natural Surface Trail uses, and pickleball tennis courts. What we're asking the Board to do today is confirm that the staff correctly heard your direction on June 9th and prior, approve or edit as needed the recommended new plan language, which we'll be showing you, approve the revised draft plan recommendations, again, which we'll be showing you, and which we showed you on June 9th, and approve the final Wheaton Regional Park Master Plan, reflecting any changes that are requested during today's work session and the work session on June 9th. Starting with the Equestrian Center, Wheaton Park Stables, what we heard from the Board on June 9th is a request to remove the language, suggesting any potential alternative uses of the land the stables are on, add language that identifies the stables as an important public-private partner, and finally state that Parks will work with the stables partner to help it become financially sustainable. So here's the new language we've developed for the Board's review. I can read it for the record, if you need me to, otherwise I will just ask that you read it, and let me know if you have any questions or comments.
Okay, hearing no objection, I think we're all good with that.
Moving on to natural surface trails, what we heard from the Board on June 9th is a concern about opening up the outer loop to mountain bikes, introducing potential conflicts between less experienced equestrians and mountain bikes, as well as between hikers and mountain bikers. And you asked us to return with an option that minimizes these conflicts, potential So this is the map that we have prepared for the Board's review. This new trail plan I'm going to walk you through has already been vetted with the Wheaton Park Stables and also with our natural resources staff. So the changes that are notable is that the outer loop is now includes a part of the Arcola Trail, and that this will be fully multi-use. We've also added a new natural surface trail through the woods to the inner loop, the Acorn, the Acorn Trail, and the Acorn Trail will be hiking and equestrian only. This is a slightly modified version of the inner loop. The areas in white are parts of current trail that will be removed, and the dash line will be the new trail alignment for hiking and equestrian only. And finally, per the Chair's request, we are showing a new multi-use, fully multi-use connector to the Nature Center along this route. We chose not to use this route because this trail passes through the amphitheater and would have significant impacts to Nature Center programming, so we are showing this connector here as the way mountain bikers primarily will get to the equestrian center, I mean, to the Nature Center.
Just one question, you talk about this inner loop for pedestrians and hikers and horses, but to get to the stable area there, as you go north, and then you get a very thin line there as you cross over.
Right, so.
Up to the other circle, the circle around the.
Yeah, so this will be a new trail on the Equestrian Center site. This is an existing trail here from the stables to Glen Allen Road. This trail here will be hiking and equestrian primarily, and this will be the way that horses get to both the outer loop and also to the inner loop.
Yeah, I didn't know whether north of that little thin, the thin line, whether that's appropriate there.
Yeah.
North of there, north of your arrow, to the upper loop.
Oh, this, this trail?
Right in there, yeah.
Yeah, this is primarily an equestrian-access trail?
I think the point is it exists.
It exists.
It's thin, not because it's small, it's thin because it's existing.
Thank you.
Right.
So actually, I'd like to thank staff for coming up with a really good compromise solution on the trails. I just, you know, a couple of things, I've met with the stable folks, and they're happy about this, they think it works well for them, because as, you know, the issue, of course, was similar to when we did our bicycle master plan, we looked at comfort levels, and there is a variety of levels of equestrian, you know, equestrian participants, and they needed certain different, you know, to address the different comfort levels, and I think the internal trail gives them enough of an experience to both use it, to use it, and then more experienced and more comfortable riders, equestrian riders, can also use the outside trail. I just want to get a couple of things confirmed, for example, that the staff, that the Parks Department will be taking that inner trail, and I know that there are probably some challenges on it for current equestrian use, so I would like to make sure that there's a smooth transition once that trail is brought to a condition that it is appropriate for equestrian, because there's not been an equestrian-used trail, because I believe that there's some stairs there and some other obstacles for the horses. So I want to make sure that, once, that the transition on the outer trail will not, you know, for the bikes won't occur until that internal loop is resolved.
Well, before we get into that, I'm concerned that we not preclude multi-use access to the road while we're just waiting around for some additional trail to be built. So I guess I have the same concern from the other direction, which is, I don't want to wait around, you know, years before bikes can get access through the park, so.
Right, but I, but I don't want to preclude the users, the equestrian riders, from having a comfortable, comfortable access before any changes, change is made. So I kind of disagree, I think that the most important thing is first getting the internal trail accessible and usable before you open up the current trails, because then there's that lack of.
Let me just, we believe we can move fairly quickly on both of those. Once this plan is approved, we, thanks to the support of the Board, we have a robust trail staff now, and we are chomping at the bit to come in and make, there's been trail renovations that we've been holding off on during the development of this plan, and once this plan is approved, we'll be able to convert the inner loop fairly quickly, very quickly, to an equestrian loop, and then we will move on, you know, immediately after that, to doing the renovations of the natural surface trails in general, and, you know, moving on to the conversion of the multi-use trails in short order, with the appropriate communications that are necessary as part of that, and hopefully some improved, you know, wayfinding signs that are badly needed. So I don't see that request as anything that's going to slow down subsequent steps, and we had always, one thing that I will just note for the record, is we had previously committed to building the trail on the stable property prior to converting the loop to multi-use. I think at this point, our priority is going to be converting the inner loop to equestrian use before converting the outer loop, because the feedback that we've gotten is that the additional loop trail on the stables property is nice, but it doesn't serve the primary need, which is a trail loop. So that's my sort of sense, it's not something that we're writing into the plan, but that we're going to focus on converting the inner loop, converting the outer loop, and then at a later date, working with the stables folks, build the additional trail on their property.
Great. I'd also like to acknowledge that we've received a significant amount of correspondence from the bicycle community, and I understand that, you know, their concerns, a lot of them ask that we not, that all trails be open, and I want them to understand why we're doing this, it is a comfort level. And in that regard, it's not that we don't hear them, at least from my perspective, I can only speak for myself, I acknowledge that we've received it, I acknowledge their concerns, I think this is a win-win, because they are, you know, the bicycle, they're getting the connection, more than a connection, they're getting an actual trail, an additional trail for use. But I think the reason I'd like to raise, to talk about that, is a lot of the correspondence, the community seems, some of the community seems to continue to believe that these stables operate as an elitist-type sport for equestrian users, and I want to clarify what's going on at the stables. So the Wheaton Stables is currently on a month-to-month lease with the Commission through the Parks Department's Public-Private Partnership Program, and they operate the stables, serving diverse families from the surrounding area, with lessons for children and adults, from those with no experience to those who have a significant amount of experience. They do it at an affordable price, but, and they also provide instruction on the care of horses and some private boarding. But more importantly, there's an, there is an organization called Cura Personalis Project, Cura Personalis means care for the entire person, or CPP, as I'll refer to them, which is a nonprofit, pre-vocational and vocational day program for adults and transitioning youth with intellectual and developmental disabilities, and some with dual diagnosis of mental health, focused on care farming, of which equine activity is included. In 2016, CPP moved its programming of which equine activity is included. In 2016, CPP moved its programming to the Wheaton Park Stables at the stables operator's invitation. This is similar, for example, to care farming that's done on the Red Wigler Farm, which is another partnership that we have. So CPP has grown from, from 2018 as a pilot program serving two young adults to, in June of '22, serving 29 adults, and this summer will serve an additional five youth in their work programming, all at the Wheaton Stables. The CPP serves individuals which, that span in scope of developmental disabilities, from individuals with profound intellectual disabilities, and, for example, there's a participant of an adult who is blind, receiving water through a G-tube, to individuals with high-functioning autism who could drive themselves to the program but whose severe social anxiety and limited social skills prevents them from engaging in paid employment opportunities. So the participants of this program do whatever's needed at the stables, Monday through Friday from 10:00 to 3:00. They coordinate with the barn manager, and those individuals aid in mucking, changing the bedding, preparing meals for the horses, sweeping the barn and surrounding areas, removing cobwebs, washing and repairing fences, clearing horse trails of downed branches, just about anything that would be required of barn staff. In addition, they have a shredding business that takes the shredded paper and mixes it with water and manure to create compost for the community. So it's, there was a, one of the comments we received was concern about the horse manure, and they're recycling it and reusing it for other community benefits. So caring for animals is essential to the experience for the CPP participants, and the program is clearly within the mission of the Parks Department, to encourage participation in parks and recreation programs and services, and to extend those programs and services to underserved communities, such as those with physical, mental, and social barriers. At Wheaton Stables, CPP has finally found a home that is accessible with public transportation for the CPP staff, for the participants, and the participants' aides, because each of the participants has an individual aide that works with them throughout the day. And being at the Park Stables has offered the advantage of engaging daily with the public that come to ride or simply enjoy the atmosphere of the stables. CPP is able to show the public what it's, what this population of individuals with disabilities is able to do with the proper support, and it provides a vision of possibilities for families with young children who have disabilities. The CPP board, the bylaws, corporate policies were developed in March of 2015, and in July they officially became a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization. By early 2017, they became, CPP became a Maryland Developmental Disabilities Administration vendor for community development services. They've received grant money from ARC of Maryland, Montgomery County Government, Montgomery County Department of Health and Human Services, and the William Abel Foundation. And they're able to secure, they were able to secure the PPP funding during the pandemic. So through a joint venture, I'd like to announce this, because I've been working with both the Park Stables and CPP, so they are forming an official joint venture of, for, so you have a small for-profit business, and CPP, which is a nonprofit organization with an established governance structure and experience in fundraising, they're going to join forces to enter into a formal partnership to operate the Wheaton Stables. The combination of a for-profit, of a for-profit operation, business, small business, and nonprofit programming will establish a financial structure with a broad wingspan of, for fundraising and revenue-producing opportunities. So, but first, they need a long-term lease, albeit with benchmarks, but they need to succeed with a capital campaign to address the facility needs of the stable, and we need to support them in doing that. So I'm asking that, once they have established this joint venture formally, which they're working on, that I'm asking that the park staff make this a priority to, so that the new joint venture can now take advantage of state grant possibilities in the next legislative session. When I worked at, I was on the board of Gandhi Brigade Youth Media, and one of the important, and we raised $600,000 in order to build out space under a long-term lease in the Silver Spring Library with the county. The only way that we were able to raise those funds was by assuring our donors that we had a long-term commitment by our landlord, in this case, Montgomery County, but for, for the stables and the CPP joint venture, it would need to come from the Parks Department and the commission. And I believe that we just, obviously, we just heard from the soccer plex of what a successful public-private partnership that that is, how much money they raise, what their economic development opportunities are, and contributions to the county as a whole. So with that, I want, I can, we can show again and demonstrate what a true partnership between government, small business, and nonprofit can accomplish. So with that, I appreciate the work that the staff has been doing over the last several weeks to try to address this issue with the park, with the stables. And I think it's a great opportunity, and I would love to hear back in a report within the next several months about how that is going, how those negotiations are going. Thank you.
I really appreciate your comments there, Carol. That was fantastic and a good, good point that you raised.
Yeah, I agree with all that. I think it's a glass half empty and glass half full kind of thing, but I think we're all in agreement that this needs to be, that the long-term future of the stables depends on getting a financially sustainable model for both capital and operating costs of the facility. And I expect and hope that that can be done. So I think one thing that's been productive about this whole conversation, and to be honest, I think I've been a little bit skeptical of this, but I, it's not because I don't want this to succeed. It's because I think it's urgent that we get this operation on track to be financially viable over the long term, so that it's successful for the operator, it's successful for the people who benefit from the program, and it's also not a drain on the Parks Department, and all those, all those things. And I know that park staff, when they're negotiating this lease, will be working very hard to make sure that all three of those objectives are met and that nobody's interests are compromised. Okay, any other? Oh, pickleball.
Okay, one final item. At the work session on June 9th, the board supported the plan and recommendation to convert the three tennis courts to eight pickleball courts. However, the board was concerned that tennis players may not know about available courts nearby to Wheaton Regional Park. So staff did a little bit of analysis and shared this with some concerned tennis players, and we're now sharing it with the board. So tennis courts within, within two miles of Wheaton Regional Park, both parks and schools, there's a total of 62 courts, a number of which have been recently renovated in the last couple of years. And then when you jump out to two to five miles, you get an additional 74 courts for a total of 154. And then if you go out just a little bit further, five and a half miles, you capture Only Manor Recreational Park, which has 18 tennis courts, which will remain tennis courts, per our agreement with USTA. So with that, we're asking the board to approve the final 2022 Wheaton Regional Park Master Plan reflecting the changes that we discussed today and also heard from the board on June 9th.
Yeah, I spoke to our in-house consultant on pickleball, Matt Foden, this morning. And he told me that Parks has really succeeded in addressing some of the issues with the noise created by pickleball at Only Manor. And I think part of that consists of just dispersing pickleball, because there's such intense unmet demand for pickleball. And he was telling me, there's people, you know, when Only Manor first started, when they first striped the pickleball courts, there's people driving from like Frederick County to play pickleball because it's, it's, it was one of the few courts that's available. And so now that there are at least a few more places to play pickleball, that has really relieved a lot of the pressure. You don't have as much of the 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM heavy traffic that was at Only Manor initially. And I think this will help with that as well, to try to, you know, absorb some of that and disperse it. So Matt and his family can get some sleep, and people want to play pickleball can play pickleball. And I think it's crystal clear, a few years back, we had a big discussion of tennis, and what became clear in that discussion was, we've got a lot of tennis courts in the county. Now, some, some particular needs of tennis players may be challenging to meet, like particularly informal tournament play, where you're looking for a number of courts together. Only Manor is one of the places that has a lot of courts, and, and there's only a few locations in the park system really that can accommodate a lot of people playing sort of these pickup tournaments together. But I think it's absolutely clear that there are plenty of courts, particularly in schools, as you said. So it's not like nobody can find a place to play, to play tennis. I think probably tennis and pickleball service delivery should be focus of some analysis internally, and I think we should bring that to the board at some, at some points. Nothing has to happen right away, but I think this is going to be really well-received because there is a lot of demand for pickleball, including among people who used to play a lot of tennis, and it's not really something they physically are up for anymore. So I think that's really good. Any other questions or comments, or a motion to approve this?
Can I make a comment, Chair Anderson, before the board votes? Just two things. I just want to thank the team that worked on this plan. I recall the community outreach phase and running into them in multiple physical locations out in the parks, doing outreach, going back years. And I just think the culmination of their work has resulted in the best Park Master Plan that we've probably ever produced, as far as its level of detail and sophistication and the thought that went into all the recommendations. I think we have a new model for what a Park Master Plan looks like. And the second thing on the last discussion about pickleball, I just want to note, the board's going to hear the word repurpose a lot in the future from the Parks Department. And I think whenever we talk about repurposing one park, piece of parkland or amenity for another, it's going to bring controversy, because we're going to not be able to meet needs as much as we did decades ago by finding undeveloped land to add amenities. We're going to have to find perhaps an amenity or a piece of ground that is not as popular as it used to be to meet the demands of the future and the changing needs of our community. And with that, you're always going to hear from the community that used to value that amenity or ground. You're going to hear from them. It's just going to be the way of the future. For an example, repurposing a piece of open ground into a dog park would bring that type of controversy. So I just point that out with this discussion with pickleball. We use that word a lot more, and it just is going to be what it's going to be. There's going to be controversy every time, but we will, if we believe there is a need that is greater than the need the existing amenity or ground is serving, and that that's the right place to put something, we're going to come to you with it. You're going to hear both sides of the story.
Well, thank you so much for that. And I think this, this plan really exemplifies what you said. It's a combination of preserving existing use, reimagining other uses, and I agree, this plan is pretty remarkable. So I think Chair Anderson once said, if you're not changing or growing, you're probably failing. And I think the Parks Department is such a great example of just constantly moving forward with new ideas and recognizing that our demographics are changing, our uses are changing. And so with that, I'm going to make a motion to approve the Wheaton Regional Park Master Plan.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is approved. Thanks very much to all of you for all that work.
Thank you so much.
And we're going to need a motion to go into closed session, talk about the acquisition or disposition of real property.
I'll make a motion to go into closed session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is approved unanimously, and we will adjourn after our closed session.